President?
Councilmember Fry.
Present.
Councilmember Vader.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks.
Present.
Councilmember Tanner.
Present.
Councilmember Koenig.
Present.
Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent.
Go ahead. Any more discussion on it?
I would actually ask Mr. Mayor that there be an item added under new business, Item C, now would be written charges pertaining to the city manager.
One more time, Brian, just the end of it?
Sure. City manager.
Does he want to amend his motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion to include Item C under new business, written charges, charter pertaining to city manager.
Do you have a second, Carol?
Do you have a second right here?
Yeah, sure.
Any more discussion? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Vader?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer?
(coughs)
Mayor Householder.
Going down the list is other regular business, including resolutions, proclamations, presentation, and right under there we have the city audit presentation.
Good evening. I'm Bob Gerble, managing partner, Gerble and Company, CPA firm in St. Joe, and Brian Wisniewski, CPA, and Veronica Van Antwerpen, they're the two that did the audit, so any questions you might have, they can answer it. The audit report, the MDNA, which is Management Discussion Analysis, this was prepared by the staff, and it's written layman's language, and it should be required reading, because it's very informative. Let's go to one and two, which is our independent auditors' report. We stated we audited the financial as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2014. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the city of Bangor at June 14th. This is not qualified, it's unqualified. It's the best opinion the CPA firm can give their client. So, let's go over to the next page, which is page three. It says statement of net position at June 30th, 2014. And in business, this would be a balance sheet. This is a citywide accounting. There's two different columns there, under the governmental activities and the business type activities. So, let's go to $2,290,197. That's an increase of $16,918. Cash and cash equivalents is up some $4,725. Due from other governmental units is up some $84,700. Counting 565, that's down some $70,487. Prepaid expenses, $19,967, $24,269. Then the capital assets, and they're detailed more on page 25 of the report. The non-depreciable assets, there is some land. The depreciable assets, they're at $1,511,321. That is, the beginning balance was $1,631,391. There was some additions of some $5,685, some retirements of $10,244, and then depreciation of $11 for the year. Down to the liabilities, total liabilities, $390,868. That's down some $108,400. Big item there is the, well, there, all those accounts were pretty constant. The net position, which would be the retained earnings or the fund balance, is $1,899,329, The next page is the statement of activities. This is also required under Gadsby 34, using the full crew method of accounting. The expense column, $1,194,164, an increase of $41,280. General government expenses, that category decreased by some $36,726. Public safety increased by some $70,791, and public works increased by some $17,861. Recreation and culture, $47,558, decreased by some $5,164, and the interest, $3,426. So, there's total expenses for the decree, $1,194,164, increased by some $43,280. Then we have water and sewer expenses. The sewer fund is down some $25,016, and the water fund increased by some $12,914. Pardon me, I'll be back up here. The total expenses for the water and sewer, $663,756, a decrease of $94,549. The component units, had the community and economic, $350,155, long-term debt of $2,006. Total expenses for the component units, $352,161, an increase of $262,543. Charges for services, you see the first item there for total governmental activities, $126,060. Operating grants and contributions, $212,754. The charges for services are down some $17,702. The operating grants are up some $20,023. So, let's go down to the general revenues. You see property taxes, $741,993, an increase of $91,393. State grants, $22,705, up some $6,073. Franchise fees of $27,705, that's an increase of $885. Interest decreased $6,351 to $174 for the year. And we have some gain on sale of some assets, $2,510, and other revenues of $12,537. So, total general revenues, $1,052, $1,7613, and the net possession position increased in $152,263. Then there was a prior year adjustment of some $23,499, which decreased the net position. So, the net position at June 30th, 2014 was $1,899,329. The water and sewer, still on page four there, had a change of some $31,539, and the net position at the end of the year was $4,522,91. With that, let's go to page five, which is the balance sheet, using the governmental accounting method, which is the modified accrue method of accounting, and this is the method that the city uses in keeping their, and required by state law to use this method. General fund, total assets, $9,153. The cash of $177,79, an increase of $13,756, due from other funds, an increase of $46,223. The $61,682 accounts receivable, $30,025, a decrease of $27,727. Prepaid expenses, $14,144, a decrease of $9,018. So, the total assets increased by $82,317,339. The total fund balance of the general fund, $224,746, which is made up The total fund balance of the general fund, $224,746, which is made up of the... $144. This is for expenses paid prior to June 30th that were going to be used in the year beginning July 1st. Then there was some restricted for Police Fund of $13,961. Then the unassigned portion of $196,641, an increase of $109,84. And the... Another, the general fund, major street fund and the local street fund, or major street fund, total assets of $83,536, a decrease of $1,920. Total liabilities, $1,464, a decrease of some $3141. And total fund balance of $82,072, that is an increase of $1,221. Then the local street fund, total asset, $36,677. Total liabilities, $1,000. Total fund balance of $35,646, a decrease of $7,006. Let's go to page 37. Page 37 is a Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balances. And we're required to show the original budget and the final budget, and compare the final actual revenue and actual expenses to that final budget to come a negative variance. So total revenues, the final budget, $890,000. You actually took in $919,424, an increase of some $64,474. And it has a positive variance there, meaning you took in $29,000 from what was budgeted. Expenditures, final budget, $877,767, $819,000, which is an increase of $46,420. The City Council, first item there is increases, $4,910. The City Manager, the increase there is $9,551. The City Cork, decreased $4105. City Treasurer, increased in $29,513. Other expenses there under the General Government, decreased in $20,823. $30, an increase of $28,438. And the Code Enforcement, increased in $7,038. The, under Public Works, $125,546, decreased, Street Lighting decreased by $1,523. Parks decreased by $1,066, or decreased, and then the Library increased by $746. For Other, there wasn't any the prior year, so that increased $1,610. And then there was capital out in the prior year of some $28,837. expenditures, $819,553, and you spent less than what was budgeted, so you have a positive variance there of $58,414. And the revenue expenditures, $100,071. The balance of the general fund at June 30th, 2014, $224,746. And let's go to page, the next page, the same type of statement. Major Street Fund, total revenues of $127,097. You actually spent $125,876. So the revenue excess of expenditures of $1,221. And the fund balance at the end of the year was $82,072. The next page is the Local Street Fund, total revenue is $7,182. Total expenditures of $57,176. Revenue is the excessive expenditures of some $13,006. And the fund balance at the end of the year of $35,646. Let's go to page 41, and the Police, the South Haven Hospital Authority. Police had revenues of some $20,990. Fund balance at the end of the year of $62,835. South Haven Hospital Authority, $96,61, expenditures of $9,661. No increase, no decrease, no beginning balance. Bangor Fire District, $92,000, total revenues $92,835. They actually spent $93,600. Fund balance is $765. And the fund balance at the end of the year of $53,584. Somebody had a question about the fund balance there being short or something, and we spent some time looking at that, and we feel that those figures are correct. Beginning balance of $54,349, is from the previous year's audit report, and then the decrease of $54,500. Paintings, total revenue $7,000, expenditures of, balance is $6,634. Fund balance at the end of the year, $40,581. Let's go back to page 29. Note four there is a schedule of changes in long-term debt, and you see what the debt requirements are for each year, the principal, and then the interest. The next page, I just want to call your attention here, this is a note on the defined benefit pension plan, and the, December 31st, 2013, the pension plan was overfunded by $749,709. Now, there's very few municipalities that have a pension plan overfunded, so give yourself a little credit there. Page three is other post-employment benefits, and the obligation, which is shown in the balance sheet, of $604,483 as a liability. Let's go back to page 10. We'll talk a little bit about the Water and Sewer Fund. Sewer Fund, total operating revenues, $385,203, decrease of some $25,000. Total operating expenses, $356,098, a decrease of some $53,012. So we had an operating of $5. And there's some interest expense there, so the fund balance decreased by some $1,503. $31,016 benefit or greater than last year change. So the fund balances sewers is $3.6 million, $198,498. Expenditures, $298,844, decreases some $12,914. And the net change in position or net profit in the water fund of some $10,544, which compares to a loss a year ago of $32,170. So the fund balance at the water fund is $9,5,514. We were required to do a fraud investigation. It's called SAS 99, and we fraud in the financial statements, and we found no evidence of any fraud in the city. We did not have to do a single audit, which is a audit of federal funds, because we're under the limit that we're required to do. So that wasn't right. In summary, the City of Bangor is in good financial condition. All the funds of the city have a positive fund balance. Let me say that again. All the funds within the city have a positive fund balance. The General Operating Fund has a fund balance of $224,746, which is an increase of $100,071 from the prior year. The fund balance of $224,746 represents 3.29 months the city could operate without taking any revenue. Or stated another way, fund balance is a percentage of expenditures, 27.43. Anything above 20% is good. The Water Fund had an income of $10,544 after depreciation, while the Sewer Fund had a small loss of $1,503. I want to caution the City Commission that to continue to operate for... Because you never know what's going to come down from Lansing or Washington in the way of unfunded requirements. So keep that in mind. Does anybody have any questions? Here to answer the questions.
Could you talk a little bit about the Water Fund? Last year, it was reported that we had an actual, we had a fund deficit, so we were required to submit a deficit.
There's, in the Water Fund, there is a deficit in the unrestricted portion. The state says there's a three-step process to determine if you have to file a deficit elimination plan. The first step is, is there a deficit in either the... The second step is, do your current asset, or do your current liabilities exceed your current assets? In the city's case, they do not. So the state says at that point, you do not have to file a deficit elimination plan. If they were, if your liabilities, current liabilities were in excess of your current assets, then there could be some financial problems. In this case, that wasn't the case there, and it wasn't in prior years either. So you didn't need to file a deficit elimination plan with the state.
Basically, auditors last year just used the first test and didn't move to the second or the third test.
Yeah, I can't speak to what they did.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. You gave us a communication of significant material weaknesses. I'm assuming those are things that you're asking us to work on together?
Yes, yes.
Eliminate.
And you have competent staff that can work, and we're willing to work with them.
Excellent.
To get these things accomplished.
Have you been retained for next year?
I'd like to say thank you to the staff, Lisa and Jim, and Ryan, and men who got to see you once, and it was a pleasure to work with you, and they helped us immensely in getting the job done on a relatively timely basis. So, thank you.
We also want to say thank you to you, because you guys did an excellent job this year. Thank you so much.
I have one request of the Commission, that you adopt the resolution accepting the audit report, not approving it, accepting it. You don't want to take the responsibility of it, but just to accept it. So. Okay, if there's no other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill.
It's nice to get a report that we could read. I said it was nice to get a report that we could read through and understand of, so I was impressed to see that.
To accept the budget resolution.
It's not on our agenda. So you have to do it, and you have to add it to the agenda.
Thank you. Let's move on down the list, everyone. Next thing on the list is the City Attorney Report.
For the benefit of Mayor Householder, who was not present for either of the last two meetings, and for Mr. Koenig and Mr. Bader, on the first meeting that was held, the Controlling Authority met earlier this evening on the two ethics ordinance violation allegation complaints. And the Controlling Authority took the same action on both complaints, and that is to have the matter reviewed by an independent attorney, who will then report back to the Controlling Authority his opinion as to whether or not the alleged conduct rises to the level of misconduct or a violation of the ordinance, and if a violation, what recommended or discipline would be, or what options are available to the Controlling Authority regarding discipline. And so that's what happened with the Controlling Authority. The Council approved at the last meeting the signing of the separation agreement with Gary Baker. I have yet to receive the signatures on that document. Now that Lisa Imus has been appointed as acting city manager, she can sign in that capacity, and I need to get Mayor Householder's signature on that as well. That was approved at the last meeting. There's some dates that are triggered by that document, so I'd ask the, either tonight or the coming days, that that be done. Lastly, when we went to a flat rate payment from my office, my bookkeeper was very excited because she felt that we were keeping detailed timesheets of our activities, but I had to go back and remind her that we still have to keep detailed timesheets. There was a FOIA request. My apologies to Jim France, I don't know, I don't see Jim here tonight. Getting his response late, that information was timely requested of me by the city clerk, and I didn't get the first draft of that detailed information to Mr. France until late last week, just the day before Thanksgiving, I believe. And I have an updated list. I indicated to him in my email that I had not added phone calls yet, and so I have an updated detailed sheet. I'll be providing the same detail to the city clerk tonight. That will go along with our billings to the city, and from this point forward, all of our billings will show the detailed statements. So I'm anticipating that Mr. France is treating that FOIA request as a continuing request. So when, for example, our bill for November, or I guess it would be, November 1 through November 30th, will be provided to him as well in response to that same FOIA request, including the detailed timesheets. Just to give the Council some understanding of the time that's being spent, since August 1st, I can tell you the time that actually has been tracked amounted to over 90 hours. And had the firm been billing the city at our normal, the bill would have been nearly $11,000 during that time. The city was billed $4,800. That was based on the arrangement with the city that we agreed to, or they listened. So, and I'm going to be bringing that up again after the first meeting. That's all I have is a Attorney Report, unless anyone has any... That's all I have is an attorney report, unless anyone has any questions.
Anyone else, City Council members? Okay, moving down the list is opportunity for public comments. Please state your name and keep your comments, less than three minutes. Great, thank you.
I have a concern about you appointing, um, your treasurer as the interim city manager, or whatever you want to call it. It puts her in a position where she's her own boss. That is a conflict. We had this happen once before, a long time ago. The Council voted to install Gary Groot, my country's wife, Carolyn, as the city manager when we had an opening, at a meeting which I was not. The next meeting which I came to, I made a motion to remove her because of the conflict, and the attorney at the time, Mr. DeStefano, assured me that there wasn't a problem. I asked him for a written opinion, and at the next meeting, she stepped down very quickly because the written opinion was in their favor. So, I think it's a real problem for you, is my opinion.
Anyone else? All righty. Moving down the list is new business. There was a request for the Fourth of July Committee for Fund Distribution. That was to Robbie. The Bangor Fourth of July Committee is requesting that funds for our committee currently being held by the City Hall be released to our committee.
I'd like to say, I have some concerns there. I would think that, just as the Apple Festival does, the money passes through the city. I know that there is, uh, an account, they have their own separate account from the city at Fifth Third Bank. I'm not sure how the city with any of their money, if this is something from previous, or if it's something that's happening now, but I would recommend in the meantime that we would, uh, have them turn in bills to the city, just like the Apple Festival to be paid, until we can figure out exactly how that money ended up in the city's hands and where it should go.
I guess, Lisa, do you have any comments how it ended up in the city's hands?
Yet I don't know. We've carried the balance for quite some time. I look back to oh-nine, we had, it's been between four and six thousand dollars consistently through that time period. So, I don't know where the background is. I would have to do some more research or reach out to anyone in the public that has any information on it.
So, basically, Vanessa, we should probably ask for Robbie probably more details about it, I guess.
Um, well, we can, in light of the parade, Fourth of July Committee is asking for this money in order to create, to pay for parade expenses that's coming up this Saturday, pending the next item on the agenda. So, if there are those expenses that they would like to have paid out of these funds, we, as Lucas said, we could do it, um, have them just submit the bills like we do for Apple Festival, pay them. That way, we, it gives us a little more time to find out the background and make sure we're doing everything with the due process it deserves.
So, do we, basically at this point, no motion and no movement until the bills are brought up and we ban? What are we looking for?
I'm sure we'll hear back something.
You need something. Either to table or to instruct the city manager to do whatever issues I could do.
I move to table the requests until we can get more information from our treasurer, city manager on this issue.
Any more discussion on that?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What if we received bills in the meantime?
Exactly.
I'm in my motion to allow for bills submitted by Robbie or the committee. In the normal manner.
Is that second?
You're going to be spending, I mean, money's coming out of a city fund, so I always prefer a vote.
Can you have a roll call, please?
Okay, I want to be perfectly clear on what we're voting on.
Yes.
Okay, because first I heard tabled, and then I heard we're going to, if Lisa gets bills, we're going to.
Well, we're tabling disbursement.
And, how can we table disbursement and allow her to?
Well, because the request that he turned in, he requested for us to disperse the entire fund balance to the committee.
Okay.
So, so the motion's on table, is to table it for more investigation, and the problem is if there's bills popping up, as long as it comes in receipts, we can ban, we're authorizing Lisa to disburse the payments for the bills. Is that correct?
So, I want to make sure. What in voting?
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Farmer?
Yes.
Mayor Householder?
Yes. Motion approved. Leading into that is the Christmas parade will be Saturday, December sixth, this coming Saturday.
Lineup is at five o'clock down at Apple Blossom Lane, and the parade will begin at six o'clock. There's been some concern about enough police enforcement to lead the parade and follow us. We may need to make some arrangements for that.
Can we reach out to local sheriff, see if they'll come in by at your time and support it? And M.D.O.'s been approved to, we petitioned M.D.O. for approval to check on M.D.O. for due to time?
We've asked them. I have not gotten the approval yet.
We anticipate.
Okay. Any more discussion on it?
Can you stop in in the morning? We'll try to get that.
Thank you. Moving down the list, will be the added amended written charges pertaining to the city manager.
Earlier today, I forwarded to all the city council members a written memo detailing the written charges which mirrored the motion that was made at the last meeting by Mr. Koenig, and that motion indicated what, that was, that had approved by the, by the council. And so, that motion indicates what the city's position is with regard to misconduct that rises to the level of the just cause for termination. The motion also stated that I was to prepare those as written charges to be approved by the council, so that I could forward those to Mr. Fellows, and then that would trigger a ten-day timeframe within which he is entitled to a hearing represented by an attorney, if he so chooses, to address the, the charges. I don't like the word charges, it's what's used in the charter. Obviously, no criminal charges are pending. So, I would ask the council to approve those written charges as stated, and allow me to then send those to Mr. Fellows. Before ending on that point, I can tell you that I have spoken with, with Ryan and with an attorney. He does anticipate, uh, requesting such a hearing. His attorney has given me a heads-up, so to speak, that his schedule may not permit something to happen within the ten days, although it wouldn't, he's not, wouldn't be asking for a delay of much time. He, they may be coming back to us asking for a little bit more than ten days. As a professional courtesy, I indicated that that would not be a problem, but that would take the council's approval to say that if they come back and need more time, that I can work that out with his attorney to schedule the meeting.
What would he need more time, like, what's he looking for?
He has, the attorney to, has the right to, excuse me, Ryan has the right to have an attorney represent him at this hearing, and the attorney just simply may not have time within his schedule to appear within the next ten days. So, he may, but again, he may. And so, I just, what I need from this council is a motion to approve written charges, out the date for the meeting, and coordinate that date with the council and with Ryan's attorney.
I move to approve the written charges as presented by the city attorney, and to give him, uh, up to eighteen days to work out a date for the hearing, and if not, I expect to hear back and reschedule if needed.
The next council meeting is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I can't do that yet.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth is next city council meeting. There's motion on the table, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Is eighteen days reasonable? Do we, shall we specify how many days? I don't want them to get to eighteen days, and there's one more or two more.
The way I'm interpreting what the council's motion is that's been seconded is that the meeting would have to take place within eighteen days of today's date. Uh, so that assumes that the written charges are mailed tomorrow. And from my discussion with Ryan's attorney, I just, I don't have an impression one way or the other of what kind of a delay, although he certainly didn't indicate it would be lengthy.
The way I look at it is, the charter says ten days, so we're giving an extra eight days, and I'm sure we'll hear something back in that time.
I am confident that we will hear something back even this week.
Okay, can we have a roll call for that?
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Farmer?
No.
Mayor Householder?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion approved. Moving down the list is opportunity for public comments again. Please state your name, keep your comments, only three minutes.
Uh, the last meeting and this meeting, I have heard that we have fired or discharged or let go anywhere from four to five city managers since you've taken the chair. Would you tell us the names of the city managers you fired, let go, or discharged since you was taking that seat?
Taking the seat, technically, we haven't terminated any city managers. Currently, we have one suspended.
I'm not talking about suspension, I'm urgent. You've gotten rid of them, fired them.
Since I've been here, the first city manager that was in, already hired before I took over, was a guy named Richard Marsh. Rich left at his own will to better himself. He's city manager at Inkster. I did give him a recommendation. You might get anybody back to better themselves, and he left in his free will, and grass is greener on the other side of the fence when you're bettering yourself. Like I said, I gave him a recommendation. In the meantime, between Rich and Ryan, a bridge the gap, we had help from the village of Paw Paw with the former city manager of Bangor named Larry Nielsen.
You didn't fire him.
Didn't fire him. It was only a ninety-day contract, which kind of bridged the gap until we found a replacement.
Even at that, Rich Marsh had, had applied to Inkster, I think, over a year before he came to Bangor, and so, they offered a better deal for him.
It's no difference from, like, our police force and other people.
Well, I just wanted to get that out, that you haven't really gone ahead and fired anywhere from three to five. I don't know what the number's actually, actually is, but three to five city managers since you've been here. Thank you.
Any more comments?
I don't know who's responsible, but whoever seems to have done wonderful things with our budget over the last year, thank you.
Any other comments?
What are the charges against the city?
What? What are the charges against the city?
Can they be publicized or talked about?
Absolutely, they can. If you give me just a moment, I'll, I'll read them for the benefit of the council and those attending. I'm sorry, I didn't bring a printout, I have my email, I'm sorry. Number one, unwillingness to follow council direction, acting in a manner inconsistent with policies established by the council. For example, allowing PCI to switch to fleet gas cards, the U.S. diecast hookup to city sewer, failing to respond to citizen concerns regarding high water bills. Number two, insubordination, handling employment matters in a manner inconsistent with direction and understanding of the council and city attorney, advising council that the chief of police was no longer on the payroll when in fact he was still on paid administrative leave. Refusal to give keys to City Hall to the mayor and Mayor Protem as directed by approved motion in a timely manner. Number three, unresponsive to requests for information from council members, refuses to answer questions and tries to steer council decisions with misinformation, demonstrates an inability to answer direct questions regarding the finances of the city, having to defer to the city treasurer in most cases. Number four, misled the council regarding the PCI contract for management of the city's Department of Public Works. For example, presented a contract to the council and had the council believing he had bid out the three, two, three companies, suggesting to the council that contracting with PCI was the only option. The other companies were not allowed to bid this out, quote, apples to apples, end quote. Number five, not acting in the best interest of the city and is refusing to communicate all information to the council. Number six, not managing his departments, for example, failure funds for police vehicle and allowing departments to, to not provide services as required, forcing the council to intervene by way of motion on several occasions. Number seven, inability to perform his duties as demonstrated by the scores on his performance evaluations provided by the council. Written evaluations are attached here too, and incorporated by reference as if repeated verbatim herein. Uh, the written charges are, the statement of the charge is the charge itself. The four examples are parentheticals, meaning they are examples of, that were given either in the motion itself or in the performance evaluations directly. Since the performance evaluations, uh, were discussed in an open meeting and, uh, Mr. Fellows has been provided copies of those, they were attached to the charges in an, in an effort to provide full disclosure of exactly what the complaints of the council were about Mr. Fellows' job performance.
Any more comments? Moving down the list, boards commission, commission appointments. Looking at reappoint Betty Merple to the Van Buren District Library.
Make a motion that we, uh, reappoint Betty Merple to the Van Buren District Library.
Going down the list is City Council member comments. Starting out, Danny?
Uh, I guess I was a little misled today when I got the, um, email from Ryan, because I didn't see any of the charges that were just presented from the previous meeting. In the voting that we took last time, I thought it was pretty much like watching an episode of Survivor on TV. I thought it was kind of a complete sham, and I want to know where he gets the immunity idol, because that's just about what this means to me. You know, he was hired to do a job, he did the job.
Councilmember Fred?
Um, I just have a quick question for, um, PCI. We had talked a couple months ago about the ship sale, and you were going to look into getting some prices, is he in there?
They're in there.
Okay, getting some prices on it, I was wondering if we got any on that, or you made any budget?
All those projects are bidded out years in advance. What we have to look at is what we have in the fund as of today and what we work on. So, it's, it's an ongoing process. And we got, we got to see. We gotta, we gotta see what we have and then go to bid with them. So it's, we can get something for you, but it'll probably be later in the winter. We'll actually, we'll come to you with a formal bid and actually go out and have, you know, bid on it.
Excellent, thanks.
Did you say gypsy?
I think it's called ship seal, right?
It's gypsy. We just gotta figure out what, what streets that we want to do and we've got an engineering firm that's actually helping us go through the phase studies of the roads and all that kind of stuff to help us get an idea of where we need to do it and what we can do, if those that we can, then we can go through and bid on it.
Excellent, thank you, Mike. Also, just some comments about some of the things that were said earlier as far as the ethics hearings. I know everybody's upset because we're spending a lot of money on this, as I do agree, it is a lot of money, but as I stated to councilmember Fry here, it's, it's kind of a no win situation. If we don't do it, we're criticized, if we do it, we're criticized. So we're taking the advice of our attorney, who has led us in the right direction up to this point. So I think the only prudent thing for us to do would be to spend the money. That's the only thing we can do to make it right for everybody. So just a note on that and it's all I have right now.
Thank you, Fred. Councilmember Earl?
I don't have any comments tonight.
Councilmember Luke?
Well, I want to say the Saturday coming up, we have the, apparently there's a craft show at Simpson United Methodist Church from 10 to 4 along with Santa's cookies and sweet shop. There's a craft day at the Bangor Library from 11 to 1. You can make a craft, decorate a cookie, or drink cocoa.
There's also lawn.
Okay. These were just notes I was given, so I don't know, feel free to. At 5:30, Elvis is going to perform in front of the elevator for about a half an hour before the parade, which I believe happened last year too, that was pretty cool. So at 6 is the Bangor Lights on Christmas Parade and I appreciate Robbie, well, he left already, but helped him put that together. And immediately after the parade, at the CC Gym, they're having positively Bangor's fans snowball. There'll be a DJ, dancing, free hot dogs and pop, karaoke, caroling, photo ops of Santa and Mrs. Claus, everyone's invited. So those are some good things going on here. I thought the auditor's report showed that we're moving forward and in the right direction for the city of Bangor, as hard as it might be sometimes. I think we're all working, you know, trying to make the best decisions for the city, even though we might not always agree. So that's all I have.
I would like to thank Lisa for all your hard work, because I know it was a lot and, and I know that we've all worked hard. I mean, there were several nights that we were here really late working on the budget and so kudos to all of you guys for making the things happen that happened this year. I've been thinking a lot about what our founding fathers would think about the meetings that we've been having lately. And I do believe that our founding fathers would agree that it's a good idea to have civil debate and that civil debate can even be spirited, not mean spirited, but spirited. We're all friends and neighbors, we've all lived in this town for a very, very long time. It makes me very sad to see citizens casting stones before they know all the facts and all the information. It's been very interesting to see people who have chosen to come and talk to us and find out what's really going on and to see the change in, in some of those attitudes. So I'm going to ask you all to please refrain from casting stones. We all have to live in this town. I would hope that my neighbors who are sitting here and here would still smile at me and wave at me when we go by. It's okay for us to have differing opinions, but like I said, I believe our forefathers would want those differing opinions to be civil.
Thank you.
I'd like to, first of all, thank Lisa and Kim for what that they're doing during this transition period. And I also am pleased with the audit and the, and the firm that has done the audit and I would like to see them be our auditor in, if that goes around, we'd like to see them, other than that. The ethics, I think that on the ethics, two meetings we had previously to the regular council meeting, I think that in order to be fair all the way around, we have to go with an outside, independent investigation on this. And I, the money, like Fred said, that is a cost, but in a situation like this, I think to satisfy the, everything about this, that we go that way. Otherwise, I have nothing more to say.
Thank you, Jim. I know Thad Earl brought up a concern, you know, with a treasurer and city manager doing the same position right now, but hopefully the checks and balances, that the city council does sign off on checks when the, it is written by the treasurer. So it's not just one person writing checks and sending them out. So if there's, if there's something that does occur, I mean, there's hopefully a check and balance. Who's gonna double check it and sign that check? And besides that too, all accounts, we do request detailed information, where it's going, who it's going to, okay? So our best thing is, it's detailed, it's broken down, it's everybody's job to review this, go through all the details and verify that it's not that point, you know, you do the crime, you do the time, alright? So our best thing is make sure we use the money properly. That's why we have some of the double checks and balances right now with the city council members. Lisa's not here to look and make any mistakes and she's concerned about making mistakes and that's where the city council members kind of come back in and, and question her and feel comfortable about it, where you both sign off on it. And it's just the checks and balances, not who's right and who's wrong, it's just trying to do the right thing, okay? And that's where all this information is still published to the city council members, where it's out there. We just had the city audit report, it showed that we had an improvement in our general fund, balance of $224,000. It sounds like a lot of money, it is a lot of money to some of us, but from a standpoint of our infrastructure in the years to come is nothing. When we go out there apply for a $2 million grant, we're gonna probably need about $400,000 minimum, if not more, okay? It's gonna take a lot more money. Recently, we exhausted our road funds, major road funds, just on our Arlington project over the last two years. We had to break down part of our road fund from last year's budget and this year's budget just to do the three inches of asphalt and regrinding of Arlington. I mean, that showed progress, we got a road done, I mean, it, it's terrible and it's a lot nicer today. You know, it would've been nice, kind of dug it up, put new sewer lines, new water lines, put a new base, make it thick, pretty for those buses, would've lasted for another 20, 30 years. More than likely, hopefully it's gonna hold up for the next three to five years without problems, okay? But that's where we gotta go to. You know, we'd love to have a plan where we had surplus money, where we could go through doing a couple roads each year, digging them up, redoing the lines, re-putting down new roads, new curves. And as you'll see throughout the city, a lot of our roads were done back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s. So sooner or later, that piper's gonna sing his tune, we're gonna have to start replacing roads. And during the year, you're gonna see DCI and companies out here, we're gonna have water mains breaking, sudden, we're gonna dig them up, they're gonna do the old submarine, chug on it and close it off and fill it full of gravel. So I mean, when we talk about our funds, we need those healthier funds, we need to keep building that general funds. It's not just to save money, put it in the bank, it's about building that funds up for the matching funds. And we're talking the general, to maintain our water and sewer, same thing with our major and minor roads. This didn't happen overnight, it's gonna take time, that's all we can do is keep hacking away at it and see what we can do. I mean, we almost look like penny pinchers sometimes trying to save money, not wanting to spend money. We're, we're spending money as we need it and there's other times we're trying to, you know, we gotta maintain the city where it's functional, still working, and trying to save a few dollars. You know, good image of, you know, you can't live paycheck to paycheck, because sooner or later, you're gonna have to replace those tires on your car. So that's where, you know, if you're living paycheck to paycheck, you're not gonna be able to fix those tires when you have a blowout. So that's just, that's basically all the comments I have tonight. Thanks, thanks for everybody coming tonight, we had a nice crowd, actually peaceful crowd, thank you very much. Do you have a motion during the meeting?
So.
All in favor?
Alright.